Welcome to the regular meeting of December 5th of 2022. This evening, we will start with the offering of the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have the eight-and-under Livonia Girls Knights Hockey Team that is going to assist our colleague, Ms. McIntyre. Please rise.
All right. Okay.
Ready?
Who wants to start? All right, we'll go one, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great job, ladies. Okay. Great job, ladies. We're going to go to the, the coach of the young ladies just for a second here if the parents want to hang on.
Yeah, just, girls, you know what? Well done. Was that fun? You were on TV to the millions of viewers out there. So for everybody in the audience, this is your Livonia Eight-and-Under Girls Knights that just played four hockey games yesterday and beat up on some boys, right? Right? Let's give them a quick round of applause and then we'll have them on their way. Thanks, girls.
Okay. Welcome to the 1,958th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This will be a voting meeting. And the minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting held on Wednesday, December 14th of 2022. Ms. Nash, please take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have all members of the council here this evening. At this time, I will entertain a motion regarding the minutes of the, excuse me, regular meeting of November 14th of 2022.
Support.
Motion by Vice President Toy, support by Mr. McCullough. Any additions or comments to the minutes from the council? I see none. Any audience comments on the minutes from November 14th? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Hi. The minutes of November 14th are approved. We also have revised regular meeting minutes of November 2nd of 2022, reflecting verbiage from the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting of October 10th of 2022. Can I have a motion on that matter?
So move.
Support.
Motion by McCullough, support by Donovan. Any comments from the council? Additions? I see none. Any comments from the audience on the revision of the minutes from November 2nd? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes are approved. The revision of the minutes of November 2nd is approved, that is. At this time, the council sets aside 30 minutes at the beginning of each meeting for audience members to address the council in regards to any items that are not on the agenda this evening. Council allows members of the audience to speak for three minutes. Does anybody wish to address the council at this time? We will keep... Yeah, so this is only on items that are not on the agenda this evening.
Oh, I, I understand.
We have some new technology, so we're going to...
Okay.
Okay, sir, please, your name and address.
Steve Johnson.
Go ahead, sir.
I guess I'm looking for clarification. At a meeting of this council, in considering an amendment to the dog ordinance, the issue of jurisdiction to enforce city ordinances on school property came up. Then Councilmember Jolly said, "We've all seen prosecutions of city ordinances on school property in some sense." You recall the rock-throwing incident where, on school property, that was prosecuted because it violated city ordinance. Mr. Bernier said at the meeting, "We don't have a lot of jurisdiction over a lot of things that happen on school property. There's a lot of things we do. For instance, if a crime takes place on school property, we can certainly enforce our criminal laws that take place on that." Violation of the amended leash ordinance is considered a criminal misdemeanor under Livonia's Code of Ordinances. I filed two complaints of ordinance violations with the ordinance department, one against the church and recently one against the Livonia Public Schools. Neither complaint was ever responded to by the ordinance department. I reached out to Councilmember McCullough, who I had worked closely with on the amended ordinance, and he suggested I contact the mayor. I emailed the mayor and a couple days later, I got a response from a Ms. Simmons on behalf of the mayor. Her email read in part, "As we do not have justification, or jurisdiction, I'm sorry, over Livonia's public school property, we encourage you to reach out to a member of their staff. As of this date, I have not received a response from Ms. Simmons to my request to provide documents that support her opinion. Now, either the mayor's representative is correct in regards to jurisdiction in cases of city ordinance violations on public school property, or the city attorney and yourself, President Jolly, are correct. In any event, this involves matters of public safety, which should be paramount to any elected official or employee of the city of Livonia. I'm calling on the mayor and this council to assure ongoing violations of city ordinances are abated. Thank you."
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other audience communication?
There we go.
If you, if you'd like to address the council this evening, it would be a lot easier and helpful if we did our best to line up here to go from person to person and bear with us a little bit here on the technology.
Pressing load. Reset.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Please tell me your name and address.
My name is Manly Q. Not long ago, I became a citizen of the United States of America. I learned one rule of the law is everyone must follow the law. Leaders must obey the law. Government must obey the law. No one is above the law. A school or a church is not above the law. I don't understand how they do not have to follow the same laws we have to. We are not being given the same rights as other people in Livonia. Just because we live next to land, owned by the school and the church, this is not fair. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Council President. I'll wait until the clock is reset. I don't want to, don't want to jump the gun here.
Good evening, sir. Please tell me your name and address for the record.
I lost a couple of seconds. Christopher Martin, Livonia citizen. Last time I spoke at the council meeting recently, it was about the food program for the seniors over at the civic center area there. And there should be five hot meals. Due to lack of volunteers, we have maybe three, sometimes less than that. Like today, there was no hot meal. It was just a cold meal. So last time I spoke about this, I asked that, since we had so much COVID money that we didn't know really what to do with, if we could get like six, maybe seven, full-time people over there and ones that were just not pulled off the street or somebody was over there to have a meal and somebody said, "Hey, would you like to help out?" People that are serving food over there for the elderly who are, some of them have, have health problems. And so we really need individuals with, who are going to wear a mask and gloves and a hairnet and show up. Now recently, that's not me, folks, recently, in this flyer that is given out to the seniors, the senior bulletin, in here, it's under a Talk with Ted. I didn't know this until I read it, but Ted Davis is in charge of that. That area over there comes under Parks and Recreation for some odd reason. So Tuesday, December 13th, at 10 o'clock, you can sit down and talk with Ted. So I plan on doing that. And last time I was here, since he's on the Senior Citizens Committee, I did ask Mr. Morgan to work with you, Mr. Jolly, in trying to get some employees over there. This is a very simple thing now that I've read this. You can just move some people from Parks and Recreation right open, you know? I would ask for volunteers and I would say to them, "You get a chance to leave the area that you're at, take a little break, you get a free lunch, go on over there, help out. Maybe you'll feel good when it's done and we'll be performing a duty to the older citizens of Livonia." So I don't know if Mr. Morgan has gotten in touch with you, but I would like to see one of you, if not both of you there, okay? Talk with Mr. Davis.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Sharon Madley. I am a Livonia homeowner on Hoy Street, near Nash Park. I'm here, first of all, to thank Mr. Brandon McCulloch and Mr. Ted Davis for reconsidering a disc golf course that was installed in Nash Park. It was very close to private property lines. It's in a very, most of the disc golf course was in a secluded area of the park. I was a victim many years ago when I first moved in of burglary in that neighborhood because the north side of the park is unlit, it's unfenced, we have very large lots that look like they're part of the park. Again, I just would like to thank you for the help and also they will be removing the disc golf course park Wednesday. So just want to thank everyone that listened to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, is there any other audience communication? Last call. I see none. That will conclude the audience communication at the beginning of the meeting. At this time, I will go to the city council. Does anybody at the council have announcements? I will go Mr. Barr, Mr. Donovan, Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. First of all, thank you to everybody involved with the parade yesterday. If my memory serves me correctly, that was our sixth consecutive, I'll call it consecutive with the asterisk that we missed a year due to COVID, but really fun day, probably the best weather we've had for it. And just specific thanks, I know Ted Davis and his crew, many other people at the city, DPW, I'm sure many that I don't even know about, specifically Billy Kappen over at Parks and Rec, who plays a huge role in pulling that off every year, and thank you for that. Second thing, and just a little bit of fun, I have to point out, there's a, there's a little bit of symbolism in what I'm wearing tonight because as a lifelong Michigan Wolverine fan, I'm very proud of the fact that they won the Big Ten Championship. And as an alumnus of Kansas State University, I had to put my purple on with them winning the Big 12 Championship Saturday. It was a fun day for me, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to say, "Go Blue." That was an awesome game. Thursday, myself and Councilwoman McIntyre attended the CERT appreciation dinner. It was a great time. I didn't realize we have that many CERT volunteers. It was awesome to see that many people there, being celebrated, being honored for their dedication. If you don't know what CERT volunteers are, they are a group of people that volunteer a lot of time to the city of Livonia for different events throughout the community, help out in whatever way they can. And it was nice to just acknowledge them and their dedication. Some of them have given over 1,000 hours in a calendar year. It's important to note that the police department is a big role with the CERT organization and I'm happy to see our city and our CERT, our city and our police department take advantage of the CERT and utilize them because some cities, they have CERT volunteers, they're not utilized. It's awesome to see our police department recognizing the work that they do and utilizing them for such a great cause. So thank you to the CERT volunteers out there and I implore more people to volunteer and get involved with CERT. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President Toy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I have to just send out kudos. This morning, I was woken up to this awful noise and I thought, "What is that?" And yesterday, ironically, they, I had a fall cleanup done and there was all kinds of leaves out there and our leaves were supposed to be picked up on Friday and indeed they were. And the young man that did my cleanup was going to come back and I had to pay him extra, but he was going to come back and clean up those leaves for me. Unbeknownst to me, our team of city workers and DPW came and had picked up those leaves all through the neighborhood once again. And I got to tell you, that group is just, not only for me personally, but just from that experience, they, they've been there every single time that I've lived in Livonia and we've had that leaf pickup because a lot of cities don't do it. And this city has been tremendous on that. It goes from our administration down to, and through and sideways to all the people that work here. Just fantastic to have that kind of service in our community, including, you know, picking up the goods, the refrigerators, the stoves, all the kinds of things that we do so extra. And when you travel to state, a lot of places don't do that. So kudos to Livonia and kudos to the leaf pickup team and obviously, "Go Blue."
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Anybody else from the council? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Mark calendars for January 29th. Eddie Edgar, from 1:00 to 3:00. Your Livonia All-Stars are going to take on the Detroit Red Wings alumni for the second time. Contractually, we are obligated to lose and most likely, we will lose. All proceeds will benefit Livonia kids and families. Tickets are $10. They're going to be available on Eventbrite and you can grab them at the rec center right at the, right at the welcome desk. $10 goes to a great cause and you get to watch us get beat up. So hopefully, everybody here will be there. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
I would just like to note, put on record, so Councilman McCullough can't back out of it, he's going to allow me to play this year a nice hockey game. And he was a little nervous because I said my main objective is to hit him as hard as I possibly can. I can't skate very good.
And we're on the same team.
He's probably going to get away from me, but buy some tickets to watch the fun. Thank you, Mr. President.
It's going to be fun.
You also want to hit some? No.
And Council President Jolly is also going to play, too.
He plays well in the same.
Mr. President and colleagues, it has come to my attention lately and several months ago, that with the passage of proposal two, many of you realize it's going to change the complexion of our elections. And after talking to our clerk and her team and observing what they do on election night, which is quite horrendous, I, I mean, we have holidays at my store, but man, your holidays are really big holidays. But I got to tell you that there's going to be, and with the no-reason AVs that was passed some time back, and I'm not challenging any of this, I'm just saying, I think that it behooves us to take a look at what we do in our clerk's office in regards to the cost increase that are going to occur and the overtime that's going to happen when they have to send out ballots during the New Year and a Christmas come, it will be next year. And the kinds of things, I think Clerk Nash could, could go into this a bit more. And I would just like to look at maybe putting this either into committee of the whole or the Economic Development or Strategic Planning Committee, Law and Education. I mean, there's places we could put it to in the committee to study this whole thing further. We have odd-year elections in this community. State elections and other elections are in the even years. And when we do an odd year, that is only basically for the city, if we have a proposal, perhaps it can be put on if the Attorney General and others approve that language. But subsequently, we are paying a lot of money to do an election in and off year, which kudos to us, but maybe we should start doing it all at once in saving time, money, and perhaps efforts. And so I would like to propose that, Mr. Chair, and I would like to turn it, if I may, to Clerk Nash to even make a comment because I hope I explain that in good terms, Madam Clerk.
We'll go to Ms. Nash in just a moment.
Certainly.
Just to be clear here, you are referring the investigation of future elections to a committee? Is that correct?
Yes, please.
You, you mentioned several committees. Which is your preference?
My preference would be probably committee of the whole.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor for committee of the whole. Do we have a second for that?
Support.
We have a second for Mr. Donovan. Does anybody else on the council wish to speak in regards to this matter? I see none. We'll go to audience communication. I'll consider Ms. Nash. Is there anything you'd like to say at this time?
Would you like me to say something now or after a vote?
That might be pertinent to the vote.
Okay. I just, I have been asked recently from a lot of people with the passages of the proposals of what this could mean for our community. And so, yes, there could be some increases in costs, considerable increases. And so that was something that I talked to with some of the council members and residents of the community that have asked me. We do run our odd-year elections. The even-year elections, a lot of the costs we cover and a lot of costs the county covers. The only election we do not have any expense in is the every-four-years presidential primary. That is one that we cover, that we pay it, but then we're reimbursed by the state. Other than that, we have significant expenses. And with the different things that have passed and they still have to go before the legislatures to kind of clarify everything, there will be a lot more involved with elections and the costs will go considerably up. Estimates could be up 50% higher than what it is right now, approximately.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Is there any audience members wishing to comment or provide any insights in regards to this? Going once, going twice? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on Ms. Toy's motion to refer the issue of future elections to the committee of the whole?
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
No.
President Jolly?
Aye. The matter passes 5 to 2 as a referral to the committee of the whole. You can look at, look for that to be called out of committee at some later date. Any other audi, excuse me, any other council comments or communications? I see none. At this time, as President, I will take a moment here and I will wish a happy birthday coming up to our former mayor, Dennis Wright, on December 13th. And we will go to our scheduled... Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. McIntyre is going to congratulate our recent retirees.
We'd like to congratulate Mary Lou Golin, a clerk typist, too, with the civics, from the Civic Center Library with 15 years of service. We thank her for her outstanding service to this community at the library and we wish her a long and healthy and happy retirement. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. So our scheduled agenda, I will note that we have reports from the mayor and other city officials, a communication from the Department of Finance dated November 9th, 2022, forwarding departmental purchase reports for the months of, the month ending in October 31 of 2022, and a communication from the Department of Finance dated November 10th, 2022, forwarding various financial statements of the city of Livonia for the month ending in September, on September 30th of 2022. At this time, we will go to our consent agenda this evening that is items number 1 through 17. These items were previously studied at the city council meeting on November 14th and found to be requiring no additional study, so they will be voted on as a single item.
So move.
Support. We have a, an approving motion on the consent agenda from Ms. Toy, support by Mr. Barr. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address anything on the consent agenda, 1 through 17? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on the consent agenda?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda passes. We will move on to unfinished business. This is a roll call vote, number 18. Proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law to add Chapter 65 Civil Rights Nondiscrimination to Title II in order to streamline the process for reporting discriminatory behavior in our community, expand protections for those who face discrimination, and make a clear statement about our values as a, as an arms wide-open community. First reading was given by Councilmember Brandon McCullough on Monday, November 14th of 2022. I'll note that we have new data. We've received several communications from organizations and residents living in the community in regards to sharing their thoughts with us via email and through the regular mail. Do I have direction, Mr. McCullough?
I'll offer a second read.
Mr. McCullough has offered a second read at this time. Does anybody on the council have anything they'd like to state in regards to item number 18? We can, I mean, we norm, we normally have, just on agenda items. We'll go to council first. Ms. McIntyre, would you like to go?
Yes, I would. Thank you, President Jolly. This has been a long, long process to get to this point where the vote's before us tonight. Last January, 22 months ago, the mayor contacted me, I was president of the council at that time, and asked me about my support and council support for what was termed a nondiscrimination ordinance. And, you know, who could be against nondiscrimination, right? And I had read the proposed language and I told her that I thought it was something that council could probably work on with her to find agreement on. There's a term in there, "public accommodation," and several of us understood at first that "public accommodation" meant "in public spaces," but that's not what "public accommodation" means. Public accommodation means "in private business." So you have a situation, you know, we proposed creating a situation where a business who was accused of discriminatory behavior, either by someone was discriminated against or they witnessed discriminatory behavior, would call the city attorney's office and commence an investigation into whether or not discrimination occurred. That puts quite a burden on a business that has done nothing wrong, nothing more than, than one person's accusation. And then the city asks its judge and jury to determine if indeed discriminatory behavior was met. There were a lot of discussions about how we had federal and state laws to protect discrimination of any sort with, with significant penalties for discriminatory behavior. And the mayor indicated that the concern was, and this was last year, that the Michigan Civil Liberties Act, also known as the Elliott Larson Act, did not contain explicit protections for sexual orientation and gender identity. And that was true, the language is not there, but the attorney general, the state attorney general, Dana Nessel, was on the record of having indicated that she did prosecute discrimination as if, as if, as if sexual orientation and gender identity were included, were part of the, the discriminatory categories in the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act. Earlier this year, that was codified by the Michigan Supreme Court, who did say, who ruled that the Michigan Elliott Larson Civil Liberties Act doesn't, does in fact include, does in fact include protections for sexual orientation and gender identity. The way things work in, in Livonia is the, the council president has sole discretion as to whether to put things on an agenda. And generally, that's never a contentious issue. We're asked to put things on the agenda or they move on from a study to a regular and we put them on the agenda. My feeling was that this, this nondiscrimination ordinance is proposed by the mayor, excuse me, was not ready to come to the council for a vote. This is a, as we know, as we know from months of discussion on this and all the letters and phone calls that we receive on both sides of this and the meetings many of us have had, this is a very, very sensitive and difficult topic. No one, no one on this council, and I never speak for my colleagues, supports discrimination in this city of any sort. And we all share the vision of a welcoming and inclusive community. And we all believe that Livonia has a lot of work to do on all And we all believe that Livonia has a lot of work to do on all fronts, as all communities do, including this one. But I was not, I did not put it on the agenda, and I suggested that the mayor speak to small businesses about this. And instead, the mayor chose to go to the Livonia Chamber of Commerce and ask the Board of Directors to pass a resolution supporting her version of the NDO. The chamber declined to do so, and what they did instead passed a resolution asking the mayor and the council to work together on an NDO. So the year continued with discussions, many discussions that I had with the mayor. I think mayor, the mayor discussed this with most of the council and not all. She discussed it, I know, with business leaders, advocates, and other organizations and people in the city. So Mr. Jolly had commented last year that if he became the president, he would move quickly to put this on the agenda at the beginning of this year when he became the president. And upon coming into the presidency and considering where we were with this, that we were nowhere close to agreement, that he elected not to put it on the agenda until, I think, September, August, or September. And Mr. Jolly and I, President Jolly and I, discussed it, and I was in support of putting it on the agenda because the narrative was becoming, council won't even discuss this. And nothing could have been further from the truth. Many of council members, if not most or all, spent, spent a lot of hours on this issue. But I didn't think it was ready to come to the council because there wasn't support for it, and I thought that we needed to get together with the mayor and have collaboration and cooperation. So we went ahead and we put it on the agenda. The mayor wanted to push forward with it, and we commenced to do so. We had, as I think many of you here, a lot of you here, probably came to our Committee of the Whole meeting on it, which we held here in order to accommodate everyone that wanted to speak. And again, many, most, maybe all of us have engaged, not just in the last two years, but especially since this came on, came on the agenda, have really engaged with people on this issue. I've sat down with people that I don't agree with this on, but I've listened, and I've come to understand why do some people, business leaders, individuals, this feels so important to them, and how they view it. And have discussed it with other advocates, who are just advocates for DEI and specifically for Livonia having an NDO. But what's happened over the course of this, this has become framed as a discussion of you either support this specific NDO, this very specific piece of legislation, or you support discrimination. And that's where I and a number of my colleagues and those who speak against this have been butthold and described. And that is unfair, and that is inaccurate. And that is an argument that's been put forward, I think, by some people in good faith, who believe this is the only way to do this, but it's been forward by, it's also been put forward by influential people in this community who know, who know that opposition to this specific NDO is, does not mean that you support discrimination. It has been a long and arduous and difficult process to get here. I am sorry that we have something in front of us that is almost exactly where we began 22 months ago. I don't understand why we have not, the mayor has indicated, and to her credit, that she's always willing to discuss this, she is always willing to discuss it. But discussing does not mean coming forward with a sincere desire to collaborate and cooperate. I've never seen a situation where one person wanted something, and it was so important to him or her or they, that, and something they didn't have unilateral over control, that they were not willing to come to a table and cooperate and compromise. And maybe it's because I spent a lot of my Ford Motor career in trade negotiations and some labor negotiations, that I see compromise and collaboration as key to accomplishing something. That's not what's happened, and because of that, I can't support this. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. So a lot of you have been with us on this journey, that's probably going on more than a year now. You know, passing in a nondiscrimination ordinance, or any ordinance for that matter, takes a lot of time and effort, a lot of meetings, a lot of sitting down, and that's why we do have these subcommittees and multiple different committees between council administration. When I look at this, I look at the facts. And, you know, I appreciate all the mail that we've got, in favor, not in favor, and, you know, I just want to be on the record to clear up some things that, you know, when I look at this and I base my decision on support of the nondiscrimination ordinance as it sits, right now, I look at this ordinance and I feel that it's fairly to a point of being watered down if we were to take it any further, right? Right now, you know, we've had instances of people coming up and saying, you know, would this example open it up? Would that example open it up? And I'm not going to get into specifics, but we've had these. And right now, the current state and federal guidelines supersede everything that we're trying to put in place here. So nothing, everything is protected. This ordinance is not superseding any of that. I've talked to some people that say, listen, if it's already covered by the state and federal guidelines, then why do we even need to intervene at the local level? Listen, there's some ordinances that are on the books, that we do things at the local level. And at the meeting of Committee of the Whole, I asked our law department, I asked law, said, I said, hey, would this overburden? Because that's a big thing. We got taxpayer money, we want to be fiscally responsible. Would these complaints overburden the law department? The answer was no. Obviously, that could be subjective if things, you know, went on, but I've heard from, in my studies at different law nondiscrimination ordinances, that they've been very few. Then I asked the other question, what happens if there's a big, a big thing that's past your bandwidth? Something bigger that should be covered by the state and federal? What would you do? And the answer was, we would push it onto that level. So again, I look at this, I go, all right, so we're going to provide an amenity at a local level, and at the same time, we're going to tell our residents we are an arms-wide-open community by updating an ordinance that hasn't been touched since 1979. It's older than me. And I'm not saying I'm old, I feel like I'm young, but still. I mean, people, this seems to me as a common sense move to do. And I appreciate everybody coming out, and I will wholeheartedly support this NDO. Thank you.
We can't, as I've said in the past, listen, we have to have public discourse available to be heard and said by all. This isn't the place for cheering and booing and all that kind of stuff, so let's just try and keep it kind of non-existent in terms of the booing and the cheering. Is anybody else in council? Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Mr. President. I typically prefer to speak extemporaneously at these meetings. I am going to mostly read what I'm going to say tonight. It's partly due to the sensitivity of the topic. It's also because frankly, I decided I'd probably be shorter that way, so, because there's a lot to say. I do not support approval of this proposed ordinance. I'd like to explain why. As Councilwoman McIntyre said, when discussing something called a nondiscrimination ordinance, it's easy to jump to conclusions based on the title alone and ask, how could anybody not support this? But this ordinance is more than a title. It's a multi-page document with details that I find concerning. But before detailing those, I'd like to start with two assumptions, and this is how I base my thinking. Number one, and again, Councilwoman McIntyre said something similar, I believe we are united, certainly on this council, and I think by and large in this community, we are united in our belief that all citizens deserve to be treated with respect and dignity. Two, we're sincere in our desire to continuously improve as a society in achieving this ideal. In fact, this council unanimously approved a resolution on August 5th, 2020 that reads the following, "It's hereby resolved that the Livonia City Council does hereby denounce racism, and that the Livonia City Council affirms its commitment, desire, that all people shall feel welcome in the City of Livonia, and that the Livonia City Council welcomes and invites all people to take an active role in the well-being of the City of Livonia community. And while one can find instances of rude behavior, including unfortunately, yes, bigoted behavior, in any community, this statement, I believe, reflects the reality of the Livonia IC every day. As a lifelong resident of this community, and I, along with many good-hearted Livonia citizens, disagree strongly with insinuations of the contrary." Having established those assumptions, I'm going to turn to the details of this ordinance. And let's start with what I like. During the summer of 2020, there were several speakers that came to council meetings and expressed concern, among other things, that racial discrimination claims against our police department were being handled internally by the police department. Though I trusted the people in charge of those claims, in fact, the police chief at that time would voluntarily come before council, before council meetings, to share the details of those claims, I urged the mayor at that time to put a new process in place that required those claims to start and end with her office, thus providing external accountability to the police department by an executive who is directly accountable to voters. This proposed NDO does exactly that by designating that the mayoral administration, through the law department, as the recipient of discrimination allegations against the city instead of the Unelected Human Relations Commission, which is what the existing ordinance does. I'm not claiming that she's doing that because of me, I don't know what, but where, what the reasoning behind that was, I'm just saying I support that part of this. I think that needs to happen, and I think that's a good thing. If this, and in fact, if this ordinance does not pass tonight, I intend to offer a separate resolution to accomplish that. Now, I'll list the reasons why I do not support the rest of this ordinance as proposed. First, this NDO has the potential to compel residents and small business owners who willingly serve everyone to promote messages and celebrate events that conflict with their beliefs. This is not a hypothetical situation. We've seen similar ordinances used to challenge personal convictions across the country. In fact, the Supreme Court just today considered one of those cases. The administration claims that this NDO reflects First and 14th Amendment protections, but when I asked whether it could be used to go after a church-operated nursing home that wishes to hire leaders who hold values consistent with its mission, I was told it probably could, and I have a major problem with that. Second, this NDO unnecessarily injects city government into the hiring and policy decisions of small business owners, making them vulnerable to unfounded allegations resulting from simple mistakes in human interactions or everyday misunderstandings. I know firsthand of many business owners who are afraid of this very thing, but they're equally afraid to voice their concern at one of these public meetings for fear of being misunderstood or targeted. Third, it discriminates against contractors that would like to provide service to the city but may not be comfortable adopting this language into their policies. Fourth, it redefines sex to include a person's conformity sex stereotypes, even though this is already captured in this proposed ordinance by the term gender identity elsewhere in the ordinance. Regardless of one's views on these topics, I'm not in favor of unilaterally redefining terms. Fifth, it removes any ability the city might have to protect women and young girls from sharing private spaces, for example, locker rooms and showers, with men, or female athletes from unfair competition from biological males in female sports. There are legal opinions on both sides of this, some of which say that this is already the case regardless of what happens with this NDO. And that may be, but I have no interest in further affirming that viewpoint with a local ordinance. Sixth, it obligates the city to investigate and prosecute discrimination claims that are already covered by existing in state and federal laws. Councilwoman McCullough referred to this. While it's likely businesses would rather deal with these claims in civil court than federal court, I fear that lowering the bar for making these claims increases the potential for frivolous claims, tying up city resources in the process. Seventh, I question whether this NDO is even needed. While bigoted attitudes certainly persist in some individuals in any community, as I said earlier, I've not seen evidence of consistent systematic denial of access to essential goods and services in Livonia for any of the proposed protected groups listed in this NDO. The examples cited in recent council meetings have been regrettable examples of rude behavior and private interactions that would not even be subject to this NDO. In fact, the very incident that purportedly prompted this proposal in the first place could not have been prosecuted under this NDO. Finally, this is a classic example of a law that will only sow confusion and distrust because once we start heading down this path, we cannot possibly envision all the categories that could be protected. In this proposal, there are two terms to describe sex, there's three to describe sexual identity. Some residents pushed an alternative proposal that added several more classifications, but why stop there? The possibilities are virtually endless. Furthermore, this NDO includes protection for, quote, perceived membership in a protected group, which opens the door for almost anything as a basis for a discrimination claim. Now, those are the eight specific reasons why I can't support this, and I know I'm far from alone in these concerns. Many residents, including some who have publicly expressed support, have privately told me that they see the problems, but they don't like the optics of denying it. I don't like the optics either, but I'm not going to be bullied into passing a bad law just because it's been proposed. I'm fully aware that some continue to push the false narrative that Livonia is an unwelcoming place, but it's a lifelong resident of this community who has lived in four different Livonia neighborhoods, five actually, but I was too young to remember the first one. I don't see that narrative as accurate, and I understand why many of our citizens reject that characterization. The Livonia IC is a friendly and a welcoming community, yet claims that Livonia needs this NDO communicate that we are not. And I'm concerned that this proposal drives the very narrative that proponents claim to want to dispel. Some have asked if we can just simplify this, and when I say some, I'm talking about particularly people that have publicly expressed support for this, but privately conceded that they see problems. And they've said, can't you just water this down to something where we can pass something to make a symbolic statement? Simply put, I don't think that's an appropriate use of the law. And if you want a statement, I'll again refer you to the resolution we unanimously passed two years ago. So in closing, recall my starting assumption that none of us condones racism or bigotry. The question is how to best-- nothing like a meeting notification to cover my nose. The question is how to best counter those attitudes when we see them. My view, and I know some will disagree with this, but my view is that rude behavior, including bigoted behavior, is best held in check by interpersonal accountability. It's impossible for the law to predict all situations and preemptively address them without trampling on First Amendment liberties, and in attempting to do so, it inevitably falls short, requiring endless amendments and creating more confusion, distrust, and ultimately resentment. Diversity of thought should not be subject to government punishment. If we want ideological freedom for ourselves, we must be first committed to protecting it in all cases, including tolerating those with whom we disagree. And when we, with the best of intentions, use the law to try to stamp out views we don't like, we open the possibility that same law being used to stamp out views that we do. This is why many honest citizens fear that nondiscrimination laws such as this will end up being used as tools of discrimination themselves. I know it is unusual for an elected representative to stand up against something called a nondiscrimination ordinance, and I'll tell you, the pressures against doing this are immense. But I hope that this lengthy explanation, and thanks for your patience, will help you understand my reasons for doing so. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council? Last call. At this time, we will go to the audience. Let me lay out the parameters here. Anybody in the audience is allowed to address the council for up to two minutes on this specific topic. We would ask, first and foremost, that we be respectful whether or not you agree with the opinions being shared by your fellow residents or citizens. We would also ask you, if at all possible, for the-- for the type of information that's going to be shared here, that we avoid repetitive comments, repetitive arguments. I can assure you that we are all listening intensively in regards to whatever anybody's saying, saying things 10 times isn't going to make us hear it more than hearing it once. Ms. McInt, again, please be here with us, it's the first time we're using this new technology. You will receive two minutes, and we'll go, you were up first, I think. Can you tell me your name and address, please, ma'am?
My name is Colleen Conley. I live on Fairway in Livonia. I've been a Livonia resident for over 40 years. I am not in favor of the nondiscrimination ordinance that is being considered tonight by city council. I have found Livonia to be a safe, welcoming, well-run community with outstanding schools, city services, and government. Livonia is a great place to raise a family, and we are proud to be residents of Livonia and to have raised our children here. This ordinance is unnecessary. It would be duplicative of rights that are already protected by the U.S. and Michigan constitutions, as well as pertinent civil rights laws. People in Livonia are already protected against discrimination. Adding this ordinance will only lead to confusion and unnecessary litigation for the city with these unnecessary and possibly considerable costs being paid by Livonia taxpayers. In addition, and I believe importantly, I believe it can lead people to think that we in Livonia believe that we need this ordinance because we currently illegally discriminate against certain groups of people, and I do not believe that to be true. I have never seen nor heard of any systemic racist activity or discrimination in Livonia. While there may be people who harbor racism in their hearts, no law can eliminate how people feel about another person. We can only regulate behavior. Behavior that infringes a person's civil rights is already adequately regulated by the state and federal governments. That is the appropriate place for grievances to be addressed.
I have to cut you off. You fit your two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll alternate sides. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Lori Bohatsky. Hey there.
I have to ask you your address.
I know you do. That's okay. I will be brief, council members. I'm coming as a constituent of all of yours and also your state representative, hoping to provide a little bit of clarity around the state and federal guidelines and policies that keep being mentioned. First things first, with this year's Michigan Supreme Court opinion in Roush World, this NDO does essentially create a local option. It is expensive, it is time-- It is expensive, it is time-consuming, it is difficult for small businesses to navigate the state and federal policies that are actively in place. Local options provide them with a easier, less expensive, less cumbersome way of doing that. I want to be perfectly clear, this NDO is the pro-business option when it comes to navigating the existing policies we have. I've also heard folks asking if it's really necessary here in Livonia. I am of the opinion that it is a value statement. However, the answer to if it's necessary is yes. In fact, one of the U.S. Supreme Court cases that codified trans protections originated here in Livonia after Amy Stevens was fired from her place of employment because she was trans. I would love to say that, you know, we are better than that, but if we are not going to look in the mirror and work to better ourselves, we can't say that. Tangential to that point, I've heard people talk about eliminating trans protections. Again, those are already in state and local policies. If we implement a policy that cuts trans folks out of the equation, we are making an explicit statement about who we think is deserving of protections and who is not. State and federal laws be damned. Another point worth making is that our population is shrinking. Refusing to protect the people that live and work here while simultaneously forcing businesses to navigate what can be complicated state and federal policies does not do anything to slow that. People are leaving our city because we do not have these protections. It is not hypothetical. We are joined this evening by someone who did just that because she did not feel this community valued her and her wife. This is not a hypothetical. We are leading this city towards failure because we are refusing to do...
I'm sorry, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm used to somebody interrupting me here. I should be looking at the clock.
May I ask Mr. Burnier for a point of clarification?
We have a question of clarification from Ms. McEntire to Mr. Burnier.
Mr. Burnier, if, does a plaintiff have the choice of where to bring a discrimination case? In other words, if someone's discriminated against in Livonia, are they then obligated, if there's a local statute, to use that statute? Or can they choose to seek remedy from the state or the federal government?
If someone feels that they're discriminated against, they could come, if this were to pass, could come either to the local, to us, the state, or the federal government, and the decision would be made.
It's not up to the business.
It's not up to, it's not up to the business. It's up to the person where it comes into.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
But again, I came here to clarify the state policy, since that is kind of my...
I have to cut you off. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You're speaking as a...
I'm not. I introduce myself as state representative, but that's fine, President.
You're in audience communication. Thank you. Sir, your name and address, please? If you want to hold on a second, we have two minutes.
Jim Rembicki. I live on Fairway. I've been a Livonia resident since 1968. I am very much opposed to this ordinance and agree with Councilwoman McEntire and Councilman Barr about it. I think that it's going down a slippery slope. I think that we do not know all the assets, all the facets of this particular ordinance, and it would seem to me there's no urgency to do it. I would suggest that this go back to the mayor with discussions to see what exactly other communities have encountered by doing this. What is the cost? What is the benefit? And we don't really know the cost. We know that there are some estimates of it, but there is nothing that has been hardwired as to what we're going to incur, how many cases, and how difficult this is going to be, and how it's going to affect businesses. And I read every other week in the Wall Street Journal, businesses being concerned about regulation, and this seems to be another level of regulation that is not going to be appealing to them, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Good evening. Your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Lisa Lark. I'm here at first to let you all know about a statement from Cheryl Thompson, who is the founder and CEO of the Center for Automotive Diversity, Inclusion, and Advancement. Cheryl is unable to be here this evening but wanted to express her full-throated support for this NDO, and has also emailed a statement of support to Council President Jolly and to Mayor Brosnan. Secondly, I want to speak on my own behalf. I am the former resident of Livonia that Representative Bohatsky just mentioned. Councilmember Barr, you mentioned that you saw a Livonia that was friendly and welcoming. Member McEntire, you mentioned that you had spent a lot of hours discussing this issue. Well, my wife and I spent many, many hours wondering if we were safe and welcomed in this community. I hear many of you tonight saying that you don't see a Livonia that is discriminatory or unwelcoming.
You have to, if you don't mind addressing...
Sorry, sorry. I speak for a living, so my own fault. That is not the case for members of the LGBTQ+ community. This is not an abstract issue. I am a former member of the Human Relations Commission, and I saw many of these discussions and took part in many of these discussions. And it is disheartening and heartbreaking to have your humanity, your life, your family be discussed as though it was a political thing to consider. We are real people with real lives, and it does not matter to us that you embrace us. We want to be treated like human beings and not ignored and tolerated. These discussions that put people like myself and my wife and many other members of the LGBT community as things to be feared in locker rooms, things to be feared in classrooms, and things to be tolerated in the community are much more than just legislation.
Thank you. Can you reset the clock? I'm sorry. Probably not the best night to introduce the new technology, but...
I'm pressing and holding the button as you told me to.
Good evening. Your name and address, please?
My name is Margaret Earl, and I live at 31545 Pembroke Street in Livonia. I, first of all, want to tell each person who is sitting on the council, you are being tasked with the most difficult vote, because no matter what you vote or how you vote, some people are going to feel like they were not represented by you. So I'm pleased to hear that you are taking everything into consideration. Now, it's often said, it's not what you say, it's how you say it. In our world today, perception influences a lot of our decisions. The more we look for certain things, the more we find it. No matter what it is, the more you do, the more you do, the less you do, the less you do. The people that are hoping that you vote for the NDO, I wonder if they will be as supportive of other groups when they come to you for a new NDO. People who are maybe considered Christian nationalists, or climate change deniers, or anti-vaxers, or election result deniers, those are all categories that people classify other people in. And we want to look beyond a specific thing. We want to accept each person as the whole. You cannot legislate or make ordinances that will change people's hearts, but in your position on the city council, what you can do is set up task forces, such as the voting, where people with different platforms come together for a task and become friends in the process. And I hope you will think about that as a way that you can impact rather than vote.
Sorry. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. Your name and address, please?
Good evening. I'm Bob from Livonia. Yeah, thank you, council, for taking this up for consideration. Oh, this is a tough decision. The residents of Livonia feel that we're very kind. This proposed NDO is just another step to create more regulation for business. We need less government, and government needs to stay out of free enterprise and small business. After communicating with many residents and business owners in Livonia, we, the people, taxpaying residents and citizens of Livonia, are requesting that the Livonia government and mayor's office focus more on serving its residents unless I'm trying to take away our freedoms by adding new local government overreach. And the city needs to listen to, which I feel you've been doing very good at that. Issues with the proposed NDO is, it's very vague. I hear reference to Section 1, that it's protected in the Constitution. But many other cities, if you reference NDOs, they have exceptions in their ordinance that don't apply to religious organizations, U.S. Government Department agencies, political subdivisions, name a few, nonprofits, fraternal, social association, private clubs and associations, religious organizations, and teaching and activities in their facilities. I only have two minutes, so I'm going really fast. So I wanted to make sure, our country was founded on the Constitution, that we are all created equal, and that their God-given abilities and hard work should be determined in their outcome of life. We need to look, to shut down the discrimination and make sure that we're all treated equal. In, for example, Isaiah 9:6, "For us a child is born, a son is given, and the government will be on his shoulders, and he will be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace, upholding its with justice and righteousness from this time forever." Peace can only be found through God, and our new city regulations and restrictions divide us. Thank you for your service, and please vote no on this NDO. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll need the timer. I'm going to be short. Good evening. Your name and address, please?
My name is Robert. I live on St. Martin Street in Livonia. I just wanted to say thank you for all the good discussion and clarifications, and also just, it's my opinion that just, I would vote no on it because it brings a us-versus-them attitude. And I was mentioning it to someone this weekend, and they said, "Yeah, I heard Livonia's getting kind of squirrely, and I just don't want to be a part of the squirrely community." Thank you.
Thank you. Reset the clock here. I'm not commenting to you. Good evening. Your name and address?
Hi, I'm Ellen Kane from Livonia. During the past several city council meetings, multiple people have asked for statistical data of discrimination accusations or lawsuits within the city. Where is the data supporting the need for this ordinance? This information doesn't seem to be available. I can only concur that while rude behavior happens in this city, and I've seen and heard it in this room, an adjustment to the current ordinance is unwarranted and would not have any effect on rude behavior. We need less government, not more in our lives. I encourage the council members to vote no on this NDO. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, Sarah Street.
Hold on one second. I'm sure you get your full two minutes.
Hi, Sarah Street. I live on Richfield in Livonia, and I think that the council should really consider this. When I hear things like what Mr. Bear said about how, "I've lived in four different addresses, and I've been in this city for a long time, and I don't see discrimination," that's insulting to everybody who's a minority in the city. Just because you don't see it doesn't mean it doesn't exist, and to just have basic, common decency of saying, "Hey, I might not have seen it personally, but I'm not going to sit there and put blinders on and pretend that it doesn't exist," because I think people who are minorities in this city want their representatives to feel like we're seen, we're heard, and there's a discussion to be had. I don't need your personal opinion on your life experiences. I want you to go out and listen to the rest of us, because as a person in this city, I have an African-American child, I have a wife, I have another child. I've seen discrimination firsthand, but I can't base my own personal experience as enough to supersede a whole ordinance. And then my other concern that I'm hearing is this idea of, "Why do we need this? We have a federal ordinance. We have a state ordinance. Why do we need state ordinances if we have federal ordinances?" Is what I would say to you. If we have a federal ordinance, and that would supersede the state ordinance, what's the point of that? So I don't understand that logic, because every branch of government has something that supersedes it. That doesn't mean that it shouldn't exist, because by that logic, we shouldn't have a local government.
Thank you. Go to this side, if you just give us one second.
All right.
Okay, you're all set. Name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Brady Walker. I live in Livonia on Harrison Street, and I'm opposed to this NDO. For the sake of not being redundant, a lot of my points were already made by Councilman Barr, so I won't repeat those, but I can touch on a couple items that he didn't touch on that were important to me. I noticed in the beginning of this NDO, the very first line says that "No person shall be denied the equal protection of laws." That's how it begins. Okay, that's a pretty blanket term there, "no person whatsoever." So now I'm just going to jump over to the definition section under subtitle E, and it reads such as this, "Sexual orientation means male or female, homosexuality, heterosexuality, bisexuality, whether past or present." Now, I get that, and I'm okay with that, because I understand that there are people that have this lifestyle. I may not agree with it, but there are federal laws that protect that, and I do not oppose these people as adults to exercise these rights. And I'm okay with that, and people who are in that part of the community. However, it goes a little bit further where it says, then it goes on to say, "This includes emotional, romantic, and/or sexual attractions." These are buzzwords to me. I've heard them in Prop 3, okay? I heard them in Roe v. Wade. They're here, too. This opens up a complete battlefield for trial lawyers to fight this in court. Suppose a pedophile wants to identify as a pedophile. According to the beginning of this NDO, he has a right of his sexual orientation. Is that going to protect our children? So I'm concerned about the children of our community, too. I mean, this goes deeper. It's deeper.
Thank you, sir. We have to, we can't have audience comments here, okay? Again, this is about discourse. Everybody has their right to say things for two minutes here, okay? We'll reset the clock. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Patty. I'm a resident of Livonia. I have been here for almost 20 years. When my husband and I first moved here, some of my friends said, "Are you crazy? They're not going to accept you because you're going to be one of a kind." When we moved into our neighborhood, I was the only African-American person there, and it was very lonely. But our neighbors were kind to us, and we enjoyed it, and we were determined to stay here, even though people kept saying, "Livonia, yuck." But we love the city, and we appreciate being here. Have I been discriminated against? Yes, I have, on a number of occasions. I have been treated like less than a human being, but still, I stick here because I love Livonia. And I want to prove to my friends that I was right in moving here. But some of you have never experienced what I have experienced. You have not been talked down to. You have not had eyeballs rolled at you just because you entered the city or because you go to a store. You do not understand what it means to be discriminated against, and for you to live your life experiences, that's wonderful. Try living mine. Try being a part of a community that you love but doesn't always treat you right.
Thank you. Just one second. Okay? Your name and address, sir?
Dave Martin, Livonia. I just wanted to say I'm opposed to the council passing this resolution, this ordinance change. We have federal and state laws that are well-protected, that are, they're there to protect everybody, transgender, gay, whatever. They're there to protect those people. We do not need another law in this city. Livonia is a good, good city. I've been here for 25, 30 years, never had a problem with black, yellow, or green people moving in my neighborhood. It's fine. The federal and state governments support everything we're trying to do here. We don't need to do anything else. Plus, it would be a tremendous burden on the city's law enforcement and legal staff to deal with all these $500 fines here, $500 fines there, plus the false claims would may just be insurmountable. The city is great. People are not moving out of this city. They're moving out of this state.
Thank you. We'll reset the clock. Good evening. Your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Teed. I'm a Livonia resident. First of all, for the record...
Try being a part of a community that you love but doesn't always treat you right.
Thank you. Just one second. Okay, your name and address, sir?
Dave Martin, Livonia. I just wanted to say I'm opposed to the council passing this resolution, this ordinance change. We have federal and state laws that are well-protected, that are, they're there to protect everybody, transgender, gay, whatever. They're there to protect those people. We do not need another law in this city. Livonia's a good, good city. I've been here for twenty-five, thirty years, never had a problem with black, yellow, or green people moving in my neighborhood. It's fine. The federal and state governments support everything we're trying to do here. We don't need to do anything else. Plus, it would be a tremendous burden on the city's law enforcement and legal staff to deal with all these five-hundred-dollar fines here, five-hundred-dollar fines there, plus the false claims would may just be insurmountable. The city is great. People are not moving out of this city, they're moving out of this state.
Thank you. Reset the clock. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Teed. I'm a Livonia resident. First of all, for the record, there are no green people, and pedophilia is not a sexual orientation. As a new resident moving here with my biracial family last year, I was surprised to learn that there was not already a discrimination order here. It made me wonder if this was still the racist, unwelcoming town I visited with my two best friends as a young child when we came to see their grandmas. Last month, I was surprised. Today, if a nondiscrimination order isn't approved, I will feel embarrassed, angry, not to mention heartbroken. If what McIntyre says is true, that all council members are in favor of diversity and creating a welcoming community, then there should be no question that our city has an updated nondiscrimination order. As Brandon McCullough said, "It's common sense." If this helps people feel safe and welcome, that means a lot. I can't understand how people could vote against people feeling safe here, and it's been spoken on a number of times. As a new resident, tonight, learning about city politics, let me know you've also, please let me know that you have common sense. Because one thing I've learned tonight is that you're not working well, or the mayor's not working well, or you're not working well together, and that makes me realize that maybe we need new council or a new mayor. Whether you truly care about the people who live and work here, or whether you want to get reelected, or whether you care about the financial benefits of this ordinance, you should vote yes on the nondiscrimination ordinance. This isn't your grandparents' Livonia anymore.
Thank you. We'll go to this side over here. Your, name and address, please.
Chris Schrank, Five Mile Road in Livonia. I got up and said a couple of words a couple of weeks ago, identified myself as a seventy-five-year-old gay man. I and my husband have lived in Livonia all of our adult lives, and I've listened to these arguments, and I'm old enough to know, and I've heard all of these arguments along the way in federal, state, and local governments with regard to race, sexual orientation. The reason that we've had laws passed, my God, the Civil Rights Act is only as young as the sixty-four, nineteen sixty-four, and you've got the same, same kind of arguments, you know? We don't see it, we don't recognize it, we don't need it. I have news for you. You do need it. The times are changing, and you better be on the right side of this argument, because if you're not, you're not gonna be reelected. Thank you.
Thank you. Reset the clock. I feel like I should give the commentary of the clock being reset, but... Good evening, your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Megan Street. I live on Richfield in Livonia. I've lived in a few different cities, and I was hesitant to move here. Livonia has a reputation negatively, and I think that this ordinance is a way to help people see that there's progress, if that's really what we're intending on doing. When I did move here, I ended up getting involved in politics heavily, because I want to see that here for my family. Tonight's actually my wedding anniversary, not just because my daughter is in the Livonia Knights, and we were here for that. We also thought it was very important to come here tonight and say that I'm very disappointed and not satisfied at all with the reasons why we shouldn't have this ordinance. I'd like to add that it's good for small business, as I have been a small business owner, it's good to be inclusive. It's bad for small business to not have that. And my mind is swirling with all sorts of things. I'm very angry tonight with what I've heard, and I've heard a lot of privilege come from the members here and other residents speaking. And just 'cause it doesn't affect you or you don't see it doesn't mean it's not there. So please do the right thing and just welcome your citizens. Make them feel safe.
Thank you. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Hi, Deb Christensen, Livonia resident. I was cautiously hopeful coming here tonight, hoping that we would, doesn't look promising, though, in favor of the NDO. I think what I want to say is this, for those of you old enough to know, there's a rock-and-roll band by the name of Rush, and they have a song called "Free Will." And in that song, there is a lyric that says something to the effect of, "If you don't make a choice, you've still made a decision," or something like that. Make no mistake about it, if you vote no tonight, you are sending a message to your residents on how you feel about discrimination and the people that live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Hi, Betsy Calhoun, three-three-zero-two-three, Granada. I would just like to relay an incident that may seem trivial, but it sounds like people might need to hear this. It shows just how very much Livonia needs to make a statement as to how we treat people and to pass the NDO. My high schooler and my college kid just recently walked to Bates for lunch, and while they were out, they encountered on a light pole in my neighborhood, Kimberly Oaks, right down here, some stickers, and the stickers said, "They don't hate racism, they hate white people." My kids were appalled. They peeled off the stickers, except for a stubborn one that, you know, they left saying, "Hate racism." And these, this kind of incident, it's not isolated, you know? And my son was at Frost's Middle School, there were vile racial insults in the bathroom that he had to report to his principal. And, you know, you might say, "Oh, kids are, you know, kids, they're stupid." Well, you know, we know about the prefrontal cortex, and that's true, but they don't do things like that unless they're learning it at home, and this is, you know, a reality we need to think about. So, thanks.
Thank you. Your name and address, please.
My name is Frank Tolefsky. I live at one-seven-three-six-seven Allen. I've been a resident of Livonia since nineteen sixty-five. I'm a Korean War veteran, and I highly recommend that you pass this ordinance. And I say that because there's five different, as I read the paper, five different organizations in Livonia that are for this, and I think that those of you who might deny passing this ordinance are out of touch with our community, because Farmington, Westland, and other communities have this same kind of ordinance, and therefore, and, look, of these five organizations, the police department right here, they're for it, are they not? Are they not? Yes, they are for it, and so are some of these other community members. And so Madonna University is another one. So I highly recommend that you pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir. Good evening, your name and address, please.
My name is Bob Teneglia. I live Susanna Circle, Five Mile and Newburgh. First, I want to say Councilman McCullough, he went about a minute saying how we don't need it, then he said we needed it. Okay. And I want to say there's a big difference, big difference between disagreement and discrimination. This is, this is opening the door. If you look at Plymouth Schools, they have men, boys, in women's lockers, there's no accountability, no one, you just say you're, you're a guy, you go in. There's no repercussions. I think this is what people like me are afraid of, where this is going. It's not this law, it's where it's going. And it's, everybody's about feelings. Well, if you don't, if you go parade down Five Mile with a gay pride flag and they don't have a carpet for you, oh, I'm insulted. Well, it's not about them, it's about us all. So I am against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Oops. Hi, Barb Ivan, Livonia. I, you know, like all of you, I too sit here in white privilege, but you're joking if you don't think things go on in this city. It's our reputation. We have a chance to turn this around, and I'll tell you, after hearing President Jaleh, after hearing your member, Scott Barr, be allowed to go on for eight minutes and spew lies against Proposal Three, I thought I could never be more embarrassed for this council, but I can't wait for most of you to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Nicole Mahalich, Levan in Livonia. So I wasn't sure if I was gonna say anything, but I do want to say, as someone who lived in Livonia from the age of three, for almost my entire life, if I, so I grew up in Livonia, I am Jewish. Once people in my school found out I was Jewish, people reacted differently to me, parents reacted differently to me. If I wore my Star of David, people acted different to me out in public. So I can tell you, growing up in Livonia, the feeling was if you weren't white, straight, and Christian, you were othered, okay? And I felt that as someone who certainly looks white and straight, right? And so that's not, it's not as arms wide open as it, we want it to be. I very much considered whether I wanted my family to live here because of that, because I would be raising Jewish kids in Livonia, and there is definitely discrimination in Livonia. If you haven't felt it, it's because you're not the other, but there is. Also, I do want to say that nobody's pretending to be, like, no middle schooler or high schooler is just gonna go like, "I'm trans, I have a trans nephew." It is not an easy road to go down, and you're certainly not going to pretend that you're a trans so you can get into a locker room. And when people say stuff like that, what they really mean is I'm afraid of creepy men and boys being creepy. They're not actually afraid of trans people. They're afraid of men being terrible people, boys being terrible. That's a completely different issue than someone being trans. So anyway, just, I want to say discrimination does happen. If you haven't seen it, congratulations on being the majority, so, that's all.
Thank you. With that, we'll close audience communication. We'll go back to the council. Does anybody on the council have anything to say in addition? Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all the residents that have participated. I've received a number of emails, phone calls, messages, and I do sincerely appreciate it. I've gotten tons of correspondence that are for this and correspondence that are not for this, and I sincerely appreciate the people that take the time to come to council meetings. It's not easy to stand up at a podium and talk about whether you support something or don't support something, especially if something as sensitive as this topic. It's not fun talking about discrimination. Discrimination does happen in this city. It's unfortunate, but discrimination happens everywhere in this country, wherever there are humans. It's an unfortunate reality, and I can't wait for the day that discrimination doesn't happen. My fam immigrated here from a communist country just thirty years ago. You don't think I hear it? I'm a young guy on city council. I hear it all the time. We all face different forms of discrimination, but passing this ordinance tonight because we think we're gonna get rid of discrimination is not gonna happen. We get rid of discrimination by being a good community, by our police department taking care of our residents, by our community taking care of our people. We can have disagreements about policy, that's understandable, but this notion that Livonia's this horrible community, I just clearly disagree with it, because we're not doing anything differently than any other community. We have problems, I get it. Every community has problems, and we can work together as a community, as a whole, to fix those issues. So I won't be in support of this tonight. There's just so many things about the ordinance that we've tried to work on, we've tried to make provisions on, and it hasn't happened, and I have real problems with that. I don't have problems with different people that have different opinions than me. I have tons of friends, we all have friends, we all have family members that have different, different ways of life, and that's okay, that's a great thing. That's why this is the greatest country in the world, because we can think differently, we can act differently, we can do whatever we want in this country. But just passing this tonight, just to say we're doing it, that's not good governance, that's not good policy, and I'm not gonna be a part of it just to pass it, because tomorrow nothing's gonna change if we do or don't pass this. So I implore us as a community to work together and see how we can come together. I've knocked on thousands of doors in this community. I've met so many people knocking on doors, talking to people, and having great discussions, people that look differently than me, people that think differently than me, and I love it. I know everyone on this council loves it, I know everyone in this room loves it. We, sure, we have differences of opinion tonight, some of us support this, some of us don't support this, but ultimately, I think just passing this, just because we want to pass it, to send a message. We've sent messages, we've passed, we've passed different things on this council to send messages. I think the way we send a message is by what we actually do as individuals every single day and not just pass a piece of paper. Again, I sincerely appreciate you all for being here tonight, and I know it's not easy talking about this stuff, but I do appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Anybody else on the council?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy?
I wasn't gonna say anything, but I truly think this is a sad day in Livonia. I really do. I think it's healthy to have discussions as this, but I've heard people slamming each other. I don't like, I don't like it. I don't like people coming after each other. I think it's unhealthy, and it may say some things about people that are out in the audience or up here, but we all have our values in life, and we are all valuable people. We're all created in God's image, and I'll tell you something, it's very sad that we've gotten to this point and that we can't work this out, and we have to air dirty laundry in public. This is very disturbing to me, and I've served in a lot of places and a lot of crazy meetings, but this, to me, has been very sad, and I don't think it's ready. This is not ready yet. We are not privileged people. We've all worked very hard from what we've had in life. I know what discrimination is. I had a brother that couldn't walk and talk. I've seen people, how they looked at him, okay? There's different forms of discrimination, everyone. God bless all of you. I don't care, like I said before, who you love or who you care about. I care about doing the right thing for this community and getting it solidly right, as right as we can with all of your input, not just some of you. Thank you.
Anybody else on the council? Vice President Toy, I'd like to pass the gavel.
Certainly.
Madam Chair, can I have the floor, please?
Please, go right ahead.
Okay, good evening. So I look at this ordinance, and there is the terminology of nondiscrimination ordinance. To be honest with you, I don't like that. At its heart, and if you go a line further down, this is a civil rights ordinance. I'm a lawyer, and I've studied the law, practiced the law, but I've also studied religion, comparative religion. Religion's important to me, too. My religion's important. What other people's religions are are important to me. To be quite honest with you, people who don't have a religion, their perspective is important to me as well. We're talking here not about a religious standard, we're not talking about a moral standard, we're talking about a law. Ninety-five-plus percent of all the laws that are prosecuted over in that courthouse over there are redundant. They're redundant with state laws, they're redundant with federal laws. Laws set expected conduct in a society. We have laws that protect the things that this ordinance covers in state law and federal law, but they are not a statement of what is expected by this community in this community. I've reached out to some of the communities that have this ordinance or something very similar. Some of those communities are very Republican, some are very Democratic, and the people who've spoken to me about their experience, police officers, prosecutors in those areas, have quite frankly told me that this is not an issue. It has never become an issue. When complaints have been made, they've been investigated like any other crime. I've read the forty-plus ordinances that have been passed in the state of Michigan by other communities. They don't scare me. This doesn't scare me either. The bottom line is, we are all different in our own way. This ordinance does not create protected people any more so than other people are protected. It does not say that one person is worth more than another. It sets an expectation that all the people, specifically the people who might be at harm, are protected and not discriminated against. It doesn't say anything about agreeing with them, doesn't say anything about condoning behavior, it doesn't say anything about anything of the sort. It says that if some- It says that if somebody is different in a way that is not appreciated, you can't deny them service. You can't say, "I'm not going to give you a hamburger in my restaurant." That's what this says. We keep talking about all the scary language and the scary perspectives and the things. We want to talk about people not getting along and scaring each other? We've done a great job of it, haven't we? You can't deny someone service because they are different. I'm different. Each one of you is different. That's the bottom line. I will be supporting this and I'm happy to do so because it doesn't scare me. None of you scare me, none of your perspectives scare me. I'm done, thank you.
Certainly. Were there any other discussions from the council? You called, we ended audience communication, correct?
We did.
Yes, okay. Then we're ready for a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the motion from Councilman McCullough? Thank you very much.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Councilmember Barr?
No.
Councilmember Donavick?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
President Jolly?
Yes.
Vice President Toy?
No. Motion is denied. Proposal.
That was just me dropping the gavel. The matter eighteen has failed. We will move on to the agenda, item number nineteen, also a roll call vote. Proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law to amend Sections 020 and 030 to Title IX, Chapter 83 regarding child abuse. First reading given by Vice President Toy on Monday, November 14th, 2022. Do I have direction from council?
Mr. Chair.
Madam Vice President?
I would like to give a second reading.
We have second reading from Ms. Toy. Is there any comment from the council on item number nineteen? Is there any audience communication on item number nineteen? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item number twenty. Site plan petition from the Planning Commission, Petition 2022090805, submitted by Plymouth Armory LLC requesting approval to construct in addition to the existing building at 27492 Five Mile Road, located on the north side of Five Mile Road between Inkster Road and Fosh Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 13. Direction from council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavick?
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
We have an approving from Donavick, support from Toy. Any council comment? I see none. Is there any comment from the audience, excuse me, on item number twenty?
I'm the owner, I don't know if you need to talk to me or not.
Please come up, sir, if you'd like to add anything.
Nope, I'm just waiting to find out what you're going to say. I wasn't aware of the first meeting. I called in last Monday because all the neighbors are coming over to talk to me.
Can you identify yourself, please?
My name is John Melorani. I live at 31492 Norfolk in Livonia.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And yeah, the neighbors came by last week when I was working outside the building. They started asking me all sorts of questions and apparently there was a study meeting. I wasn't aware of it. I called in and spoke to Sarah a week ago, this past Monday. She doesn't have any record, to the best of our knowledge, that she contacted me. So it happened the first time at a planning meeting, too. So I don't know what questions you had, but I'm here tonight to find out what I need to answer.
Well, sir, I'll just say, we did have a couple neighbors of this property present at the study meeting who were a little concerned. I don't know that I see them here tonight.
There were people that were saying there was just going to be a gun range there. It's not a gun range. It is a gun shop. We build guns there. We'll be altering for gunsmithing and stuff, not actually manufacturing a gun, but altering. And there will be a retail shop once we're able to get inventory. It could be a year, it could be two years down the road. So business is open from 10:00 to 6:00, preferably. And we'll just try to see if we can keep the business running there, that's all.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you. If I made a law, would he have to come back if indeed he put a gun range in or whatever?
Yeah, there's a whole new set of licenses for that.
Sir, you're not the city attorney. I'm asking the city attorney.
There would be state licensing involved in a gun range.
Right, right. So he would have to go through the state and come back there?
Yeah, he'd also have to go through the state, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Property's not big enough to have a range.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. If you want to have a seat, maybe somebody else come up and have other questions through the council. Sir, would you like to address the council on number twenty here?
Please, Bill Ramroth on Fosh Street, interested in what this gentleman just implied. Thank you so much. I'm very concerned about a gun range. I don't want to have in my neighborhood pow, 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 happening unbeknownst to me for what reasons I don't know. Please, thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you, sir. Like fight, we're fighting over the remote control over here. My fault. All right, if we have no further audience communication on item number twenty, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item twenty passes, twenty-one. Proposed special assessment street lighting project for the Emerson Oaks Site Condominium located on the north side of West Chicago, west of Harrison Avenue in the northwest quarter of Section 36. A public hearing was held on November 30th of 2022. Direction from the council?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Barr?
Move approval.
Support.
Motion by Barr, support by Toy. Any council or audience communication? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on twenty-one.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Twenty-one passes. Item twenty-two, proposed special assessment street lighting project for Linden Park Site Condominium located on the south side of Linden Avenue between Inkster Road and Harrison Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 24. A public hearing was held on November 30th of 2022. Direction from the council?
So move.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by Barr. Any comment from the council or the audience on twenty-two? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Twenty-two passes. Item twenty-three, proposed special assessment street lighting project for the Heinz Place Site Condominium located on the west side of Jugmanville Road between Plymouth and Edwards Heinz Drive in the southeast quarter of Section 30. Public hearing was held November 30th, 2022. Direction from the council?
Move approval.
Support.
Approval, motion by Barr, support by Morgan. Any audience or council communication on this? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on twenty-three.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Twenty-three passes. Item twenty-four is a special assessment street lighting project for Grand Reserve Site Condominium located on the south side of Linden Avenue between Blue Skies and NOLA in the southeast quarter of Section 19. Public hearing was held on November 30th of 2022. Direction from the council?
So move.
Support.
Motion by Morgan, support by Donavick. Any audience or council communication here? Mr. Donavick?
Just briefly, if no one knows what all this is, these are basically just streetlights for new neighborhoods. I know we just went through four or five of them pretty quickly. These are just new neighborhoods in the community that we're essentially voting on the new streetlights in the new communities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. If there's nothing else, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Twenty-four passes. That concludes the scheduled agenda for this evening. We will go back to audience communication. Is anybody in the audience who has not yet addressed the council during council, during audience communication at the beginning of the council meeting, liking to address the council on something not on the agenda this evening at this time? I see none.
Motion, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Barr? Yeah, we'll go to council communication.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would have preferred to do this earlier, but with it not being an agenda item, I thought it's safest to do it now. I would like to offer a resolution that the Law Department prepare ordinance language that designates the mayoral administration as the recipient of any discrimination allegations against the city, including those subject to the existing nondiscrimination ordinance.
Support.
Motion by Barr, support by Donavick. Anybody else on the council liking to speak to that at this time? I see none. Anybody in the audience liking to speak to Mr. Barr's motion at this time? I see none. If you'd like to speak on this motion?
Can I just ask a question?
No, you got, I can't dialogue. If you want to come up to the podium, you can speak.
You can come up to the podium, sir.
Come up to the podium if you want to talk. We got, these lights up here are really bright. We can hardly see detail and figures back there.
Yeah, again, could you explain what that was?
Mr. Barr, if you'd like to explain, you're free to do so.